Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay. It is 6:30. We are seated here at the Bellas Falls Union High School. This is the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union. With that said, item number two is the traditional introduction we do. And I'm going to ask folks from my furthest right, and we'll everybody introduce themselves.
Archie Merrill, WNU ESD, Grafton, Vermont.
Jim McCollum, Rockingham, Bellas Falls.
Molly Vanek, Town and Westminster, Bellas Falls Union High School Chair.
Stella Lambert, Rockingham, Chair and Clerk of this Board.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board.
Jennifer Kenyon, Early Education Principal.
Andy Haas, Super Heaven Schools.
Jack Broner from Grafton, and I am Chair of the WNU ESD Board and this.
Lynn Morgan of Athens. Both the FBRF Board in this.
Renee Parkes, Rockingham, Bellas Falls Union High School Board in this Board.
Miss Kibbe, Rockingham School Board and Treasurer of the WNESU.
Ricky Adams, Technology.
Do we have any votes from the for the Board online? Now I see the two names. Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine. If anyone else wants to introduce themselves, it's online. Jim, are you willing to introduce yourself? You're just working tonight. Sounds like a worker to me. That's fine. All right. Item three is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any recommended ones? Yes.
I have one is just withdrawing 7A.
Withdrawing 7A noted. Is there any sense from you as to whether or not any of these items need to be moved up? Because I know at least one of our colleagues has an early out. We'll stick. Go ahead.
I heard something whispered over here. Sorry.
We'll stick with the agenda as written. Yeah. And next up is Communications and Public Comments. We have several people from the public. Actually, they're board members, but they're also public. Any comments from any of our public members? I see a hand up. Introduce yourself.
My name is David Clark. I represent Westminster on the Union High School Board. And when the WNESU agenda came around, there was a pretty cryptic item on it. 9E may get it right, the item number that ECLC Architecture Design Services. And I don't actually have all the alphabet soup as to what ECLC actually means. I suspect it has something to do with early learning. And I also suspect it has something to do with a proposal which the high school has been told about building SU offices on the high school campus and maybe attaching an early learning center to it. I believe that virtually everyone at the table got a copy of my written comments under Communication and Public Comment where I questioned whether an early learning center that did not service Grafton and Athens could be called Universal Pre-K. But I think that there are wiser people at this table and I have to be able to sort that out. However, let me cut to the chase here. I had strong suspicions this might have been the old policy governance Kool-Aid sneaking back in from the Vermont School Boards Association. So I thought I would have a gander at the minutes to see if there are any clues as to what this Board was up to. And regrettably, the most recent WNESU minutes that appear on the WNESU website are from May. But I thought, geez, that's not very good. How'd the other boards do? Well, not so good either. Rockingham, most recent minutes in May. Westminster, March. Union Elementary, March. BFUHS, April. Now, I may be mistaken, but I believe that the open meeting law requires minutes to be available to the public within five days of a meeting. Now, we're not expecting them to be approved minutes because boards don't meet every five days. But nonetheless, this has been a chronic and ongoing problem within this district. My personal preference has been to cut it some slack because of the fact that I realize that operating under pandemic circumstances puts a huge amount of strain. But my feeling is that we can start talking. Building that later as to whether we need or not suggests to me that there's sufficient time available in the schedule so that maybe perhaps we could pay attention to some of the fundamental requirements of the open meeting law. So I'm here to tell you that I feel very much underinformed about whatever ECLC is. But I'm also very, very concerned that for whatever reason, we can't seem to get it together to produce minutes anywhere near timely. Evan, help me. We're in the middle of August. The most recent minutes were published in May. Some minutes were last published in March. I think it's time to fix it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, is there any other comments from anyone? Go right ahead. Yes, introduce yourself.
Jason Terry, I'm on the Bellas Falls Union High School Board. I'm in, I'd like to encourage this Board right here to make a motion tonight to bring this item 9E to a town vote. It should not just be done at this Board level. I think the public should have a say on if a brand new building is being built up here. People that I talked to in this school and in town, A, have no clue what's going on and also believes that they, it is not needed, especially with the amount of space and all the schools that we currently have that can be utilized. And the lack of students that we currently have in all the schools. That is a feeling from the people that I speak with. And furthermore, I think that we need, we should be looking at addressing issues first. And let's not continue, let's stop putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. I think it's a very important topic and, you know, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be addressing these issues in some detail later on in the meeting. Some of you may have actually got copies of our plan for that, but we'll take that up later. Next is review and approve of 4 minutes for July 20th, 2022. And they are printed here in front of you. And I want to make sure that we have, has everybody had a chance to look at them?
They have not been on the website, as David just said. And I would ask that they not be approved at this meeting and look at them because I know we, I hunted for them and could not find them.
I have to admit that I have issues about this as well. If there is no objection in passing this item over, I think we can properly pass it over. I know August 1 was our drop dead date for getting these things structured. We're still, it's obviously not August 1st anymore. So we'll give our folks a little bit more time to get this straightened out and hopefully they will. So with that, yes.
I would say for the record that the minutes were sent out in correspondence to all the Board members by poll.
I did not get them.
I did not get them.
Well, then currently we've got some holes in the bucket. And I think unless we have a fully informed Board, frankly, I haven't had a chance to look in detail at some of the discussion that's come up tonight, I thought we had discussed, and it's not in them yet. So we need to, I want to take a look at them in any case. So with that noted, I am going to propose to pass this item over and come back at it in a few weeks. So moving on, reports, 6A Superintendent. It's all yours, Andy.
So I guess my first question is, did everyone get, I emailed this out earlier today? Yeah. So I guess I'm just wanting to make sure our.
I didn't see it.
Well, okay. We're going to work on this.
That's why I'm asking.
Is this the welcome back?
No.
It was a superintendent's report.
So we'll have to check our list there. So. Okay. So the first day of school for students is going to be Wednesday, August 31st. Our maintenance crews have been working hard to get the buildings ready for the start of school. Some work has been hindered by the use of the buildings for the summer programming and the fact that we've been down a couple of staff members in most of our buildings. So that's hindered a little bit. But, you know, I've spoken with all of our custodial staff and principals, and they assured me, you know, things will be up and running and we'll be ready to go. It's always amazing right there. You walk into a building at this time, it looks like a bomb's gone off. And then they just somehow put it all together. So Renee Prue has been hired as our new transportation supervisor. She's jumped right into her new role. Bus routes have been posted on our website, and they can be found under the Family Resources tab at the top. We held a nature-based institute, and we held that for 20-plus educators, pre-K through sixth grade, participated in a week-long immersion program. The educators worked with staff at Maniak University to learn how to build a foundation of understanding for nature-based teaching and learning. And this is the first step in developing our students, our teachers, pardon me, understanding of bringing learning outside the classroom and bringing the outside into classrooms. And it's part of the larger initiative that we're working on, which is to expand potential learning for all of our students, pre-K through 12, and it includes our work-based learning program as well. Summer programming was a huge success. We ran programming at Westminster School, Central Elementary School, Bellas Falls Middle School, and here at the high school. Enrolling was robust at all sites, and we have been, we have a meeting scheduled to review and discuss the opportunities for next year. New teachers will be starting on Monday, August 22nd. Deb Cardane, our new Director of Instruction Innovation and Dwellin, who is our Human Resources Manager, has been planning the orientation. So we have the teachers this year for three days. In the past, we've only had them for one. So we really feel like we'll give them an opportunity to get to understand WNESU. All staff will return Thursday, August 25th with a kickoff meeting at the high school in the morning, and then they'll have time in their buildings. They'll have the next day to work in those buildings. And then, I mentioned a little later, we, the teachers for elementary school will be working on Responsive Classroom for two days before school starts on the 25th, or, yeah, or on the 31st, pardon me. Kelly O'Ryan is joining us. She's going to be the Restorative Practice Coordinator here at the high school, but she'll also be our Diversity and Equity Coordinator. She comes to us with a wealth of knowledge in that field of Title IX and Diversity and Equity. Erica Decker is joining us in our business office as the Staff Accountant. And so we're excited to begin the year with a business office fully staffed. So that is a huge plus. And I thank Jim Zina for his efforts and work there. And then we, as I said, we're continuing our relationship with Responsive Classroom. All elementary teachers participated in Responsive Classroom 1 last year, and this year they will take Responsive Classroom 2. The middle school teachers will take Responsive Classroom 1 for middle school this year. And then the full training is four days. The first two days will take place on Monday, Tuesday, the 29th and 30th. The retention bonuses went out on August 12th to employees who are currently with us. And then payroll is working on the retroactive pay for the support staff with the ratification of CBA there. So that'll be our next push that we're pushing out. Just stating, it's awesome to be able to be starting this year, knowing that both collective bargaining agreements have been ratified. And so I'm very appreciative of the Boards and of also the teachers and the support staff for working through that. And then all of us within WNESU are excited to begin the school year and look forward to the students' return.
You want to touch on the first of these two items?
So, yeah. So ESER funds, we are finishing up ESER 1. Those funds will be no longer available to us at the end of September. So we've made sure that we try to utilize all those funds so that we're not giving any back to the state. And then we are also working on pulling out all of the concept or construction applications that we have in there. We were meeting last week and realized it works for me because I understand how the state system works, but it doesn't lay it out very nice and clean for the layperson. So we're going to pull all of those out because they're all in various stages of approval. And so we want to make sure we get those out and we'll make those available to Board members. But we just today got confirmation of another concept approval for the cooling system at the middle school. So they come in spurts, and so we wanted to just make sure that we have all of those. So that's our big push right now is to work on, work on that piece. And then opening day, I think I touched on that.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the Superintendent on this report?
Was that the ESER report or is that coming later?
I think that we're going to, we're going to touch on, I think he gave us the update on ESER 1. I think that the item that.
All right. That's fine. I do have a question. My question is this. The ESER Committee is a group that was formed by Andy, I guess. It has members, some members from the elected boards, other members from the public or whatever. My feeling is that obviously a number of issues have been decided in there, like the construction projects. And it would seem to me that the ESER Committee should no longer be the group that deals with those. It should be turned back to the Boards and the elected Boards to vet these various issues. I know as a Rockingham Director, I'm keenly interested in the construction projects. I don't want the ESER Committee involved anymore, as long as they've been identified as projects. You know, I don't know what the ESER Committee does. I'm going to go to the next meeting. I kind of mix up. But the, it would seem to me if the ideas have all been, well, anyway, I'll go to the next meeting just to see what it's like. But I think that anything that has basically been endorsed by the ESER Committee ought to be brought back to the relevant Board, whether it's this Board or whether it's one of the, the high school Board or one of the town Boards for follow-up vetting and analysis.
I want to touch on this as well.
So when we had expended large funds on construction projects, we have brought them back to the Boards. So all we've done is created concepts, and those concepts have to be vetted by the state. So we come up with a concept. We're going to fix the cooling system at the middle school. We have not expended one cent.
Right. That's correct.
We've sent that up to the state to be approved. The state has finally approved that. Now we have permission to go out and get an architect or an engineer to give us some schematics so that we would know what it would actually cost because we guessed. That's where we are right now.
Yeah. But that project should now come to the Building and Grounds Committee of the Rockingham School Department, not the ESER Committee. Okay? That's what I'm saying.
It hasn't gone to the ESER Committee. It will go to the Buildings and Grounds. That's what we've done with the other projects. When we had the high school project with the circuit breaker, we came back to the high school Board and we told them what we were doing. We've only actually had one construction project go to project through project approval, which was the circuit breaker here at the high school. It's the only project that's been able to get moved forward.
Okay. Well, I think as soon as they're ready, they should come back to the, because for example, I'm aware of several issues with regards to the middle school, for example. The cooling system, I'm not aware of that.
I'm sorry you're not aware of that. I mean, they've been explained and discussed at numerous Board meetings.
Where have they been explained?
Jim DeVell has discussed them at Board meetings, and so has Rick Schuman.
I mean, I'm telling you, I go to the Rockingham School Board.
So do I. I mean, I'm.
I might just.
I have a real issue with this.
I appreciate that, Jim. I do want to make sure that we have, we're very clear because this has been discussed here as well. We have three major projects that we're talking about here. There are other projects that are our district-level discussions. I don't know how they're handling them in their, in their meetings. I know how we're handling them at the WNUSED, and I know how we're handling them here because I have had several discussions about this. Let me, I want to be clear because I also sent individual mailings to a number, I believe all of you about this, including you, Jim. And I want to repeat what the process is. Today, we have three concepts that are, that have been discussed at ESER Committee as things that they may recommend to us. What they are not is they are not Board proposals, but they are going to become them because we're going to use our process. What is our process? Our process is to have these items referred to the Finance Committee. Do they make sense? We've already said, we gave instructions to the administration that we wanted, that was, we were past time for a discussion about the generalities. We wanted business plans. They have said, we will develop business plans for you. That business plan is going to be vetted by two committees. That would be the Plans Committee because I want to know if the numbers make sense. And we all do. It's going to be vetted by Buildings and Grounds Committee because we need to know if this makes sense architecturally, if it makes sense in terms of citing, all that. These are committees of this Board. They're not committees of somebody else. They're on this Board. You're on one of those committees. Once we have recommendations from Finance, yea or nay. Once we have recommendations from Buildings and Grounds, yea or nay, they will come to this Board for a thorough vetting. So they're going to be vetted not once, not twice, but three times by this Board and the individual representatives of it. Because that's how we do business. We are going to be very process-driven, very professional. We spend tens of millions of dollars across the districts. We're going to act like a professional organization. We're doing this the way that any professional organization would, and I told you that.
I accept.
I wrote you a note to that effect. So, and I told you that today at a meeting earlier. So I've told you three times.
No. What you didn't address, and what I asked you to address, is that the, there's, there's no connection, other than the ESER Committee, between what the school superintendent feels he needs for offices and what the district needs for early education. Okay? Now, wait a minute. Those are two separate topics, and they should be dealt with separately.
And I told you.
This merging of it at this committee level.
And I told you that they would not only be separate, but they would be separate standing items on all agendas going forth. I sent you a note to that, and I told you that today. So I've told it to you twice. That's what we're going to do. I promise you, if you don't see it, you have every reason to be upset about it because I told you, because you're not the only person that asked it. Lynn asked it, a couple of other Board members have asked it. I completely agree. That's how we should do it going forward. But then we will. Okay? I want, because I, because I hear the concern, but I also want to make sure that people understand we're trying to address it. Sorry about that. Any, I, this is for you, not, not back and forth between the Chair and other members. Are there any other questions for the Superintendent? Not hearing any. Let's go to a report from Finance, which met today. Miss Kibbe, are you at a point where you want to summarize today's events?
I'll go fast. Yep. So part of the meeting was, I think, useful for vote for Jim Zina. He brought a couple of things that, you know, what do we do with this item and how is it divided out? And that's kind of stuff that is good because there's a lot of experience on this committee, not just myself, but others. Done with those. But so one thing we have determined, although I was, I'm not sure it was really a question, is we will be dealing with the budget as the Budget Committee this year. And what we did today was set a calendar for the budget meetings. The first one would be on September 28th for a first look at positions and personnel. And concluding, we hope, with approval of the SU budget by the end of November. And that's important because all the numbers from the SU budget have to be spread out into the member district. So that's going along. And we're, we did also talk about the early ed center plan and having, once we have the feasibility study and a business, and a business plan in front of us to vet that through the Finance Committee, but we don't have that yet. I guess it's mid-September looking like it. Yeah. That's what I got.
Well, people, yeah. Questions from Board members? Just as a comment, I got to tell you that Jim and this Finance Committee have done real work there. We have, we have moved up the process of getting budgets done. It's a much more transparent process. We have a functions-based budget process for the first time since forever. We've, we're actually done a lot of the stuff I hoped we would be doing in August and September as of now in terms of setting the table for what it is we need, what it is we expect in the way of presentations and a process. We've never done this, and it's due to them, and I thank you for your thanks. And Molly?
I want to take you all out for a glass of milk if I get the WNESU budget before January 1st.
We all.
I mean, it's, no, maybe, but not the last four or five years.
We have the hole. You got it. Yeah.
But I would echo what Jack just said is that Jim and Zan's got things that really nicely.
That's nice.
In order with these.
That makes me feel way better.
Spreadsheets of, you know, current expense, budget, and it's already building the new budget.
I'm really happy to hear that.
Yeah.
It's made it really hard to get a budget done.
Well, it allows, it allowed the individual districts also to a very large extent work in parallel so that everything but the, this piece of the budget, the SU assessments, you can start to work on early, early in the process. And we're starting end of September for this one. And to be honest with you, you'll be, in a number of cases, you know, God willing, something doesn't break, to be doing it also for the individual districts, either late September or early October, I think.
I don't know if Deb Wright has a question or.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deb.
Or is that the cookie with the milk?
Deb, I'm sorry. I didn't even see you, and I can't hear you now.
That was the cookie to go with the milk. That's all.
That was the cookie to go with the milk, that's all it was, because of Molly's comment.
Record, Deb Wright is remote, and she is obviously... What are you, Deb? Do you want to tell everybody what your role is here?
I'm in my office. Had to work late. We're doing a bunch of projects, so I'm in my home office now, because we moved out of the other office.
But you're not representing your home office. You're representing what town again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I represent Rockingham.
There you go. On the high school board.
On the high school board, yes, that's correct.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Finance, Buildings and Grounds, are we going to be meeting soon?
Yes. No, you're not putting me on the spot. I thought we set a date, but I don't know.
I thought we did too, with the 22nd, but I'm just...
That's for the high school, though.
Okay, well, let's...
But we need one for SU.
Yeah, we need... See it rather than later. Might you gather with our colleagues and see if we...
So we were going to try to... Chris, we were going to try to get that together with a finance meeting?
I don't think we need it.
Okay.
The finance committee doesn't have anything really to talk about until we have a proposal.
One of the things you guys will have to talk about is apparently I still haven't seen the original material, and I apologize. The high school did have some sort of discussion about citing a little bit in advance of us, and we probably do need to find out what that was all about and see if it represents consensus at the SU.
Your next SU meeting is the 7th of September, is that right?
Yeah. That's if we... They choose to have regular scheduled meetings at the end, is the 21st.
But that is the option, you know, the other option, and I do think that there is a possibility we might have a...
Mr. Chair, can we please have the Building and Grounds Committee meeting an hour before the next meeting you have?
I was thinking, would you mind having it the hour before? We might have a meeting on that September 7th, because I really think we need to get the show on the road. Awesome, thank you.
5:30?
Love it.
And where are we meeting?
That's a good question. Where would be your pleasure?
Here.
What's the shortest drive from your office, if worth?
Well, that's the SU, but it's too small there.
Okay.
I think also if we're going to have an SU board meeting to optimize time.
There it is. Okay, excellent, thank you. Moving along, resignations, appointments.
Policy, can I comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's my... It was missing, and it was actually top of mind when we started.
Well, it's just as committee updates.
Yes, no.
Policy committee met, and we're bringing forward the D4 Title I comparability policy. There are four other policies we discussed at that meeting, too, that are being looked at by different individuals to make sure that we have everything in them that we need. Technology and the high school, and I don't know the other one, but the other four are being vetted for that, and we'll come back. We do need to have a meeting, and we'll be setting one up in the next couple of weeks.
At some point, changes like about standing committees, I'd like to actually have that embedded in policies, so that this isn't the only year we do it this way. But that's just an item for your consideration in this time.
Thank you.
Any comments about any of the committee reports? Any... Did you start to say something, or was I... Moving along, resignations, appointments, if any executive session is needed. I understand 7A has been dropped, 7B is the item.
Yep, so this is... We're looking to a point. Luis Avendado... Avendano, pardon me, my Spanish is not very good, is our ELL teacher and coordinator. Luis comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge, working in building systems in schools around students where English is their second language. You know, he has a master's from George Mason University. Worked in both Massachusetts and Virginia.
Did... Do we have a resume?
It was.
Okay, I confess I didn't see it, but I may not have been watching.
It would be a master, step 18.
Thank you. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve step 18 masters. What's the first name of Luis Avendano? Or Avendano, as it may be. I have a motion. Is there discussion on the motion?
Just a question. The person has that number of years' experience in schools that...
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Question, it was a significantly thorough resume for this person, highly qualified. Were there also letters of recommendation?
There were. I also spoke with numerous references for him. The reason why, to be very honest with you, we're so late coming to you is some of his... With the summer, some of his references just weren't available. I was actually talking to one of them, a couple of them, when I was down in Atlanta. They were calling me, so, you know, we... Yeah, a lot of...
And without objection, I'd like us to move to a vote, because part of our team is remote. We'll start with the remote member. Ms. Wright, what say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody else? Is Tina on there? I can't... There's a name, I can't read it, okay?
Stan, I think that's...
Okay. Then we'll start from my right again. Hardy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimity on Luis Avendano or Avendano, as we will find out. 8A Superintendent Goals, are we ready to talk about that tonight? We haven't met.
No, probably.
Why don't we pass it over, because we need to do that? New business for item for discussion, and that is increase... 9A is an increased bid to federal recommendations. I think we've talked about this, but you want to just touch on it some more?
Yeah, so currently, under the previous business manager, she had recommended that the federal bid amount be kept at $15,000. And so what that... And the federal government has increased it to $45,000, especially with the ESER's funds. And what... The only thing what that allows us to do is when we go out to bid for a project, if it is over $15,000, we have to secure three bids. If we don't secure three bids, we then have to push up for a bid waiver. And so it's not asking the board to spend any money. It's just allowing us to follow the federal guidelines to be able to not have to get the three bids.
How often does that come up?
Daily. To be very honest, daily is probably... It is weekly, and they get caught up at the AOE. We're sitting on two that are literally held up. But just because we've mentioned it, so like the project with cooling system will clearly be over $15,000 to get bids on them. If we get two bids back and we don't get a third, we're then going to have to ask for a bid waiver, and that just awaits any kind of movement on the process.
Any questions from members of the board? Just throw your hand up if I don't... Yes, I see one.
Well, it's not a question I support. Yeah, I mean, it used to be that getting these bid waivers was a matter of days, and now they seem to just disappear up there. So, and times have passed, and of course, inflation works its magic. So I think it's time to increase it, give Luis a little more flexibility on that.
Hardy?
I move we increase the bid process to $45,000 to meet federal guidelines.
Thank you.
Just a question. We're just talking about the bid amount. We're not talking about actually giving the bid to a person, right? We're just...
Correct.
Bid amount, just so people are...
Correct, so this means that if we got two bids back, we would then look at those two bids and still choose the bid that we felt was the most appropriate to fit our needs. If we had one back, then we could move forward with that one bid.
And to be clear, this doesn't mean that we have a no-bid threshold of $45,000. We're still doing bids, just that the three rule goes away.
And but then it comes back to the board? Or then we just will go ahead and move again without having to bring it back?
That's a good... So there's still policy that anything over $10,000 still needs board approval?
I saw.
So we're just talking about the bids?
Yes.
I see Lynn's hand up, so I'm going to... Lynn?
I lost.
So, so when you deal with federal grants and whatnot, you have to follow the federal procurement guidelines. And so the procurement guidelines say that you have to... You can't just do a no-bid and just take your friend down the street kind of thing, or because I like this guy. So you... If the project is over a certain dollar amount, the guidelines say that you have to go out to bid, and you have to seek a minimum of three bids then.
Right.
If you don't get those three bids, you can then apply for a bid waiver.
Right.
So then you send that up to the state, the state reviews that bid, and they can either grant or deny that waiver. So that's the process. It used to be $15,000. And so with the ESER funds, it was increased to $45,000.
That's what I missed.
And last year, when I came on as superintendent, one of the first things the finance at the AOE said to me is, "Why haven't you guys ever increased this? You're handicapping yourself." Given just the year and everything, it just didn't feel like it was like... And then when Jim came on, I really wanted Jim's opinion on, "Should we increase this?" Because it's a change in the procedures, and he recommended that we bring this to the board to increase it. The other piece that I was just talking about is there's still board policy that we can't... Anything over $10,000 still needs board approval to expend the funds. So we're not expending any funds, we're just getting bids.
Right. That actually might be an item to have a policy look at changing it to 15, because I think 10 at this point started to get a little tough, but that's a discussion for another day. Priscilla?
This applies to, just so Rockingham board members are familiar, this applies to the kitchen project at Central School, because we only got one bid and we're in the process of having to get a waiver for that.
Two months.
Two months it's been taking to get that waiver so far.
All right. I think... I'm feeling that we are ready to call the question and move this along without objection. Deb, what say you? Deb, we'll have to hear that with your mic on.
I have it turned back off somehow. Got enough technology.
Can you hear me now? I didn't hear the motion. That's what I'm not...
Hardy, you want to restate your motion?
The motion is to raise the bid policy from $15,000 to $45,000 to meet federal guidelines as established by whoever is in charge.
Okay, then aye.
Right. Chris Kivvy?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I just have trouble seeing over my side. I have a heavy trouble seeing tonight, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't have my contacts showing. All right, so we've got that done. What's next? Recovery Plan.
So I sent to you... I'm worried that everyone hasn't seen it, so we may have to table this. But the recovery plan is part of the long-term planning of our continuous improvement plan, but also which just needs board approval. So I think people are going to need to dive through it. We may need to discuss it more, but we wanted to get it on the agenda so that we're moving forward on it.
How many people have had a look at it? One, two, three. You know, that's not a quorum of members, I think. But why don't we give everybody a chance?
When did that come out? Earlier this week? I don't... That didn't go out today, but it went out earlier this week.
I tried to keep up, but I didn't see it. I just... I'm sure it was there.
It's the recovery plan.
This used to be called the Continuous Improvement Plan. We just have the new title to sure, right? Same old. Let's have everybody take a look at it, and let's... Do you need... Is it timely, or do we have problems?
We're not timely. We just will need somewhere in a minutes that it's better approved.
It came out Monday.
Yeah, I'm just saying, do you need it like tonight?
No.
Okay, well, then, everybody, you got some reading?
That's why I was saying it.
You got some reading? Let's get that done.
I have one question.
Go for it.
On it, it covers the middle school, the high school, and Westminster Central School. Is the piece of the Westminster Central, is that applied to all the elementaries?
I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to pull it up. My recollection was all the schools were in there, but if you're not seeing it, then I gotta go back and make sure they are in there, because they should be.
Yeah, we'll do the other three.
Maybe homework for everybody. All right, very good. C, this was an item we were going to try to get done earlier. It's the equity and heat is a mini-grant around equity and racism. I want to touch on that. What's like $5,000?
Yeah, it's a $5,000 mini-grant that the board can apply for. It sounds like it could, you know, pretty much approve, but the board would be able to use that, those funds, to do some training around equity and diversity.
Core issue here is we need a formal approval in order to get the money. So I'd like us to do that if we can. Is there any questions about it? You know, with the understanding that maybe we don't have all the answers.
And that is, we have until October to apply for it.
I don't like it. I don't mind just getting this out of the way, get all the stuff.
Jack, I could not open it to look at it. I still have not been able to get to do that.
The digital challenges are continuing to bite us.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea.
Well, I'm wondering, would you feel comfortable going along with this? Just because I really do want to get this off our plate if we can.
It depends on the other boards.
Well, questions? Hardy?
I move that we apply for the equity and any...
You're going to be my prime mover. I like this. Thank you. Yes.
On these grants, do we have a plan in place on how they are used?
That would be part of the development of that grant. So it just came out from the AOE. It's available, but, you know, we...
We've got to apply for it.
We have to apply for it and have a plan. So we have to develop a plan still for it.
Do we have a committee that helps on that, or is that in your ball field?
That would be something that the boards wanted to put together.
I wouldn't mind us looking at it at some point, but I also want to get it approved. If people would rather wait, we can do that. What do you...
The motion on the floor is simply to offer us the... There'd be any issue to apply.
Right.
It's something that develops.
Okay, then it sounds to me like we can bet the proposal after it's written along with the AOE. If we don't like it, we can change it.
So, so my question with that was, what would be the board members' responsibility in that? But you're not to that stage yet. You would have mandatory things for board members?
I think we haven't decided all that, and you're all going to have to agree to it before we...
So this is just an application for the money. That's good, but not an approval for the...
For the program that we have built.
Because quite honestly, I'm not always ready to jump on everything that these people send to us. And they offer money, but money comes with strings.
If you decide the string is too many, I'll look forward to a no vote from you at the time. But right now, we're trying to get this thing through the process.
Just to understand, this is something we're required to do?
No. This... All this is, it's a pot of money that we can use if we want to.
Can I... Because I did pull it up. So this is not a requirement. This is a mini-grant that's available to us. And advocates for the grant funds will represent the Vermont Supervisory Union with a complement to addressing educational equity, anti-racism, and inclusive communities. Most... They're most interested in grant applications that specifically align with one of, or the combination of the following essential words that it is from the Vermont School Boards. Topics of establish a vision and engage the community, establish policy, board and superintendent partnership, effective... board and superintendent partnership, effective and ethical operations, budget and financial oversight, monitor progress and performance. So they're looking for us to develop, you know, to ask for money that's going to fall into one of those buckets. So we would develop, we would write a grant that would basically say, so what I would be looking to do is pull some board members together to help write the grant. But what?
So you have to write the, if you, if you get the grant, you'd have to submit a report.
Yeah.
And if you don't ask for the grant, you don't have, is that?
If we don't get, if we don't ask for the grant, then we just move on.
You don't have to do any of it.
Right.
I see, I was hoping I anticipated on this. Molly? Molly and Priscilla?
So the, sorry, glasses. Equity and anti-racism is a, a big topic a lot of times in, in our little area. And so I don't know, I want to myself up to that. Last time we did that, then we found bills on a warrant that were very high because we had stuck something. So that's my two cents.
Priscilla?
Yeah, and the other thing is that it says that it, it is in collaborative, it's authorized the board and collaborates with the superintendent. Now the school board members who are leading or aspiring to lead initiatives that will encourage more equitable, anti-racist and inclusive education committees through the essential work of school boards. So it is, it is work that we're going to have to do. It is our work on this. So just, just so you know what, what's being expected of us.
Let me just interject that. My colleagues have been ambushed now three times in the last 12 months on these kind of issues. And been caught, in my view, off guard sometimes saying things that didn't end up in the press the way they were intended and ended up having to spend a month explaining. And that's unfair to them. And I thought when this was brought up, this was an opportunity for us in policy and just in terms of board time, a way to address this stuff so that we weren't wrong footed and had some ability to sort of know how to speak to these issues, know how to not put a, not end up with unfortunate quotes that maybe we didn't say in newspapers and help us to communicate with teachers, student members, members of the community that somehow think that, you know, we're on the wrong side of, of, of the rules on this stuff. And for those many reasons, I thought it was worth pursuing and encouraging Andy to bring this to the board. I still think that we, that these days this stuff is so hypersensitized that we can use some guidance and a little help figuring out how to, how to address this when it comes up. And it's in that spirit that I thought this was a good idea. We have a.
Jack, it's just I want to make sure that people know that we all need to work.
We have.
And leaving and, and coming up with something to.
If you're going to be, if you're going to have to deal with these issues, you need, and we are, you need to be, you need to have buy-in on what it is.
Yeah.
So, and I actually think policy is going to end up with a piece of this, to be honest with you. I'm wondering if we might be able to proceed to roll call on this at this point? Is there objection? I'm seeing on, Deb, I'm going to ask your view first. Is this an I or an A for you?
I to this. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Did you want me to vote on the motion or what?
Yes, I would love to have you vote on it.
I said aye, yes.
Thank you. Hardy?
Aye.
Jigs?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Priscilla?
I need to think for a minute.
Well, we'll, we'll roll around and then give you that time. Cheryl?
Aye.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, Lynn. I, I, I don't know why I'm surrounded tonight. Yeah, I know, Brenda. Brenda and, and Chris. Okay, so now that we've got the, what was that last one? Is that a ye ye or a nay?
Yeah.
Okay, so Priscilla?
I think it's in essence a good idea. I'm just worried about that.
Well, you're going to end up owning some of this, so I'm looking to you to help with this. So I think I've got two nays, the rest ayes, the ayes have it.
Three nays.
Three nays.
Three nays, who's the third? Oh, Brenda, I'm sorry, Brenda. So there you go. All right, thank you very much on that one. Moving on to set schedule for director's report, what's that about?
So I had sent out, I worry now, I sent this out earlier this week, was just a schedule for when we would have department directors come and speak to the board just about their own. So like in September, Student Services will come and give a report back to the board. And then October, we would have Instruction and Innovation, and then November, we'd have Transportation and so on. And then we would repeat that throughout the whole year. So you would get two reports from each director throughout the year and just wanting to schedule their time, but also so that you know and it holds us accountable so that we're, we're making sure we get them.
Are you looking for a motion to that effect? Yeah, I would get you.
I was just, it was a proposal, so it would be great if you guys, I didn't know if people wanted them in different orders or, so these were our thoughts.
We have said that all, you know, we did it in high school for years where we'd have departments routinely present on a regular schedule basis. I would like, if there's a motion to this effect, we have this as part of our annual schedule. So that we, and I would look for a motion, Hardy, since you've been doing them all tonight, a motion to the effect that we moved to have director's reports be part of the schedule and that they be part of the master calendar.
So moved.
What do you say? Comments or questions?
I just, I certainly support the motion. I'd also say the board obviously has the opportunity to request special reports at times as needed. This is simply to get it on the schedule so that it's retained.
Thank you, yes, yes. That's, it's just so that the director knows, I gotta get this report to the board and come and sit down.
If people have a question, they don't have to wait till next March. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, so I looked really enthusiastic about that. All right. Any other questions? And if not, I'm going to move to a vote. Was already, did Chris give a question? Okay, well, we're going to start with you. What say you?
Yes.
Brenda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Priscilla? Molly?
Yes.
Jigs?
Yes.
All right. It seemed to work better for me in that direction, I'm sorry. Don't know why, don't know what that's.
Yeah, right.
Deb, I'm sorry. Forgot, still not doing it right. Okay, so our, our iron A.
Aye, aye.
All right, nail that one down. Let's move on to the subject, it's been a bit of a subject of confusion, it's been mine earlier today. Nine E.
So we had been, as we kind of explained earlier, we went out for concept approval on the early, early childhood learning center and superintendent office, the two were combined in the original proposal. The purpose for that proposal was knowing that we had a need for an ear, for early childhood education. The current classrooms that they're occupying are not appropriate for the age, we could expand our offerings. So we had gone with that. We'd also looked at the supervisory union and the fact that supervisory union alone and rent costs $45,000 a year and that we had three more years on that lease. And so that if we were to be able to construct something that would not cost the district or the SU any more funds, then we would be able to couple the two together. It would also be some one shop stopping for some of our families when they come in. We would have services right there to the SU that we provide to those families. So we had gone out and to bid, we'd received three different bids back from three very reputable architect and engineering firms. And we're looking to move forward with trying to secure one of those. And so we had put together a list of the, no, I was looking at the wrong, I had a different tab open.
Okay.
So we have also, in coupling with this, we are also working with another firm to develop a feasibility study and a business plan that would work that, as Chris said, would probably be coming back mid-September. One of the biggest hurdles though with, with any architect or engineering firms that we're hearing from also is the fact that they're asking to get secured because they have other projects that people are asking for. So we had three proposals that came back. One was from Studio MLA Architects in Brooklyn, Mass. Their proposal was for $38,600.
Just to do a set, just to do the feasibility study, correct?
This is to do.
This is architectural.
This is architectural.
So this is going.
Well, that's why.
I'm trying to explain to you what our scope of sequence would be.
Yeah.
So it would be for a full set of conceptual drawings and narratives, a concept construction cost estimate, community engagement and visioning with SU, ECE teams and the community, site selection support, and extensive experience, they have extensive experience working just with early childhood spaces and outdoor learning spaces. Black River Design Architects from Montpelier, Vermont. Black River has done work in the district before. They did the renovation of the middle school and central sections. Did they do all for you?
No, I'm sorry.
No, just the middle. Okay. Their proposal was for $49,750. It includes a schematic design, detailed cost estimate, does not include additional site investigation, but they, as I said, they do have experience with WNASU. The other firm is Stevenson Associates out of Brataville. Theirs was for $78,100. That is for schematic design drawings, written information sufficient for cost estimating, does not include additional site investigation, and they do have experience working with us here at the high school.
I'm going to leave with a question, and I know we're going to have them, and that is, how does this go to tail through the process that we outlined, because to build a business plan prior to, and to get that approved by finance and then get some of the, and then get the signing and the, and the development of the actual plan approved by, by building some grounds? This sounds like it's a little bit of both, maybe a bit in advance of where we thought this process was, you know, going to work.
That both came in at the same time. In fact, when we were trying to research and looked at business planning, that kind of fell in our laps. Jennifer happened to bump into someone who actually does the work. And at the same time, we had moved forward with trying to secure even what did work, because we had no idea where these bids would come back. And so the two had just come through at the same time, so.
The answer to your question, Jack, is that it doesn't. This is a back-assward approach. It's starting with the end instead of doing the research. We had a review, we walked through our buildings, the Rockingham School Board walked through our buildings last week. Needless to say, we've mentioned this before, there is a lot of room in our buildings currently, okay? And a lot fewer students than those buildings were intended for. The comment was made that the, the room for our early ed kids is not adequate. I, I could, I can't understand that. I mean, it's a, it's a lovely classroom, it has a little bathroom right in the classroom, it's right adjacent to the door, it's got the wonderful playground across the street. These same kids are going to be going to the kindergarten in a year or two, depending on their age. This, you know, and then this whole superintendent thing, we haven't, you know, the, the.
I'm getting clear.
It's just unclear. It's just not appropriate to be hiring people for architectural studies when we haven't embraced as boards what we're doing.
I, I do want to make a point, a clarification point. We did say, several meetings ago, that we embrace the idea of going through the process of building a centralized early ed program, provided that the numbers worked and it was feasible. Now, we then, I actually thought it was in the last meeting, but it doesn't seem to be in these notes, but it was in, in a meeting, everyone remembers, most of you do, that we said, we need to take these concepts that are floating around and convert them into a business plan. So we, the, the issue about whether or not Rockingham should have its own is not what we were discussing. That is certainly an option that can be brought up, but what we had approved was having the administration create for us a business plan. The question I'm having for administration is whether or not that's what this is. And I'm not completely sure it is, because this, this is not, this is for the engineering and architectural services. The business plan would be mid-September.
And the architectural services are for not just this early education piece, but also a superintendent's office.
And we will need to have that, what we have not agreed on the combination as of yet. That may be, that is something that, again, you, the, both this board and the buildings and grounds and finance will have to vet and bring back a recommendation to this board. That's a.
Clearly doing this doesn't make any sense.
Well, that, that is a, that is a point that you can make in the committee that you're part of, and I expect that you.
I'm talking about this, this proposal.
Well, no, no, I, I, I think I, I'm hearing you, I'm just saying that's, in terms of, I'm going to make a stick to this process, it kills me, because it's, it's the way professionals do stuff. And this feels like not quite what we were looking for. It could be supporting that, but it's not what we'd asked for. We want, we want a business plan. Deb, you had your hand up, I think at least once, maybe twice.
Right, my hand is up because I have a feeling that what Jigs is saying is correct, and this is premature, to have a, to have, to hire someone to do a concept that hasn't been approved the whole hog. If it's going to include both things, that decision has, that has to be a hard, firm decision before you ask, ask, start asking for plans.
I think the, yeah. Well, I think the question is how we get the horse before the cart, which is, how do we build, how much information do we need for a business plan? Do we need a full schematic workup or do we need something much more modest? I originally had assumed it was much more modest, but maybe I'm wrong, it's been a while.
So we, the firm that we were working with was a business plan and the feasibility study, the two are separate.
Okay.
And one, the, the feasibility study.
I.
Please do.
The company that's doing the feasibility study for feasibility for the early childhood learning center and business plan, so she's going to do, she says she can have it done by the 14th, like you said, mid-September. September, right, so I was, I didn't, I didn't have the board calendar in front of me, but she couldn't have done it by the 17th anyway. So she's going to do a needs assessment of the need for early childhood learning center childcare in our area. Both are member towns and surrounding towns. She's going to look at everything, I mean, I'm meeting with her tomorrow, like revenue, what our partners are, what our goals are, what kind of tuition we want to charge, all of that stuff, and she's going to come back with a feasibility study, is this feasible and at what level, and also a business.
I was gonna say, we need, you know, yeah, it's the classic stuff.
Right.
Are we covering, are we covering? Are we covering, are we covering people for our goal? Is, is, is the upfront cost something we can swing? Is the, is the carrying cost something important to how we understood this at the time? Because that's what finances, we're generally going to wanna know. Apart from any contending ideas about whether the individual town should own this issue as opposed to having it centralized. But that's what we have said we're doing, at least, that's your mandate.
The first most important question is, is it feasible to carry this building?
Et cetera.
In the future.
Yes, I do think.
And that's for early education, correct? It has nothing to do with superintendent's office.
Correct, because.
Well, and I wanna get to that. I wanna get to that, because I think the second item, because as I said in a note that I circulated to, actually, I think to, to David, and a lot of you were CC'd on it, is there are three items that we have talked about as initiatives. There is the early ed, there is something about the SU office that we haven't discussed in any detail yet. And there is the nature education, which is more conceptual, perhaps, less necessarily dollars and cents, there's some dollars and cents attached to it. The most advanced of those three by far is the early ed. We do need to discuss at some point whether combining the two, the administrative staff moving to this location or somewhere on this campus. That's the second item. We will need to have some sort of business plan or outline of that, possibly concurrent with it. It sounds like you're actually well on the way to having some of that, but we'll need to have that. That will be agenda item, one will be, the early ed will be an agenda item A. The SU move, an agenda item B. The nature education, agenda item C. And if we decide as a board, we wanna combine the early ed and the, and the SU move, we can have that opportunity to have that discussion. That's how I see this going forward in our next meeting.
Your next meeting?
Well, we'll, we're having some of it tonight, but we certainly aren't gonna have all of it. We're talking about laying out a standing agenda items until this is addressed in full. We're not gonna solve it all at the next meeting, but I'm just saying, in the interest of transparency, so everybody knows what we're doing, how we're doing it, what our processes. This, this is, this is, I think, a structure that allows us to work this through until we're done.
So you're talking about having them explain things to us?
Well, that would be good.
It would sure be helpful.
Have a business plan, have it go to the two committees that we talked about, have their recommendations, all that.
We don't have, we don't have time to do that, the finance committee.
Well, you need.
For the seventh or the twenty-first, and the report, this feasibility study might be available on the fourteenth.
Business, business plan is the first item. We'll take a look at it, I assume we'll refer it, maybe the whole board will wanna do it, but somebody's gonna have to.
But I think, just what Jigs is saying, we're not going to have the business plan until the fourteenth.
Right.
And I don't think the finance committee has set the meet until the twenty-eighth.
Then they won't meet until, you know, they'll, they'll get it in the time we matter. Then twenty-eighth, yeah, we're not gonna.
So I think what he's saying is we won't be able to.
No.
Dive into it at the next meeting on the seventh.
Fair enough point, thanks, if that was the concern, absolutely. You had to get your hand up.
Yeah, yeah. Only to say that early education program, an SU office move and nature ed are separate items from, from construction. And so what I'm saying here is, either you're merging those concepts without a full conversation, or you're taking early education and moving the SU office and nature ed as independent subjects of construction. The whole, the whole concept we keep hearing is, we're gonna build a new building. We've got five million, some odd dollars to build it with. But that is a sep, that's separate from the fact that no one disagrees that early education is needed. We don't have enough of it in our own, in our surrounding communities. We definitely need it. But the fact that, and we keep having this conversation, that two of our buildings are not full. And, you know, and there, that means that there is room for an early education plan and possibly even to move the SU out of a rented space, leased space, when that lease expired, into another building. And then the nature ed could, you know, that's a classroom thing, so that, that conceptually might not need additional room. So why are we continuing to merge the construction along with all the rest of this? It needs to be separated, totally separated, and finish the conversation one way or the other, that way.
As I said, the agenda going forward for this board will be to have those as agenda items. And we will do, keep those as separate items until we decide, if we decide, to merge them. I, I just think we've got a number of pieces that are kind of out of sync here. That doesn't mean that we still don't have a process, yeah.
Just a clarification on early education. I had heard from somebody, I don't, I can't remember who, but they, they said that the early education thing only applied to Rockingham and the rest of the ministry. It didn't apply to path graft. Is that?
No, I heard, I heard that stated tonight.
Did you hear that?
It's not, that is not, I mean, the people that are gonna be vetting this are gonna be disproportionately Athens and Grafton people.
No, okay, so that's not true, whoever, whoever said.
So, all right, with that noted, another hand up.
Well, I just wanted to make some comments. I, I, I do know Mr. Clark is who said Athens and Grafton wasn't represented. And I do know that we have two students from Athens and two from Grafton in the early education program now. So this is an SU-wide proposal. In various of these meetings, I'm thinking of the finance committee meeting. At a, at a certain point, it was said that, I don't think this is a good idea. I'm thinking, Jim, you made this comment that, that.
Well, I don't. Early, you know, I'm a big fan of early education, okay? And the, the idea of throwing the superintendent's office in there is unnecessary, okay? It's, it's, it needs to be a separate issue study, okay? And then, and then tonight, I just heard, and Jack had sent me a copy of the email about this ed thing, what is it, the outside ed or what's the?
Nature-based education.
Nature ed. I mean, I don't know if that's part of this building. I have, I have no idea.
As I say, the whole point of this discussion, and I'm hoping we wind this off, is that we're gonna have a process. All we're gonna agree on tonight is the process. We have a process, three items on agenda, standing agenda, till they resolve. In that process, you'll get as much information as you can. You'll have your, you know, your value will be put in. You'll vote on this, you'll comment on this, and we'll get these things worked out. I just want a process.
I agree with that, I just wanna finish the comments, I was very.
I'm so sorry, you interrupted twice.
And the other thing is that.
I think he was still making a comment.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Thank you. What, what, we've had so many conversations with a lot of hypotheticals and a lot of statements made that are not yet substantiated. And so what I'm looking for here, and what I support, is this essentially feasibility study. Having the independent consultants help us establish the need and establish the business case. Let us look at those numbers.
Oh, yeah, it's the base of the education.
So I'm saying, I very much support that proposal. Secondly, it was through the, through the concept approval process, the state of Vermont approved hypothetically using five million dollars for an early learning center. We still need study to determine whether those costs are feasible. So the three proposals that were submitted, when a request for proposals was sent out, Mr. DeBelle sent that out, only a request for proposals, again, no monies have been committed. The three proposals that came in, that were reviewed by the early education subcommittee of the ESER committee, they're all substantial, they're all good and robust proposals. Only the one from StudioMLA Architects helped us understand as a group, as a process, what the community wants and also what sites might or might not be available or appropriate. So there are three substantial proposals, no commitment has been made. It may well be the case that we wanna wait until we get the recommendations from the independent consultant about the need and the business plan. And then I think, actually, if we wait until after that, and the finance committee, perhaps grounds looks at it as well, we do have three strong proposals that could help us get to the next step, if we wanna take it.
Yeah, I, I've been saying for a couple of months that I was concerned that they, that we weren't getting the step out to this, this board in a timely fashion. A couple of months ago might have helped a lot, but that's where we are now. I, so I'm sorry.
The only thing I wanted to add is that I think the reason that the supervisor union building movement was considered from the standpoint of this might be a good time to look at that, because we might be able to do it together with that, because we are paying about fifty thousand dollars a year in rent. And we would save that amount right off the top by having our own building.
That's.
So by looking at that, we would, we would have the chance to find out whether it was feasible and whether it was a good idea.
Go ahead.
So the only thing I would ask, carrying this conversation, I know that when the superintendent's office moved Cherry Hill to its current location, a committee was formed, a board committee was formed to look at sites and everything. So I would ask that this board form a committee to look at sites, because I keep hearing about space. I know of an office here, in one building, and an office in another building. And so if there are people who conceptually see how we can use space better in our buildings, and that that will be a savings to the SU, because that is ultimately what we're trying to do. Spending, we're spending, we have a lovely building and it's a great building, but it is, it's expensive.
I would say that, having been on that committee, and Molly being, having been on that committee, for the reason that, now, she's on that committee is because of that experience. Part of the reason she's sharing it is because of that, that experience. And we had originally envisioned that as being sort of a subcommittee of buildings and grounds, and that's how we operated. So this process could be the same. That's why, maybe in some ways, they'll weed on the advisability of doing the two cases together and have finance get that. I don't know which order yet, that's gonna work, we'll have to figure that out once we get the business plan.
But I guess what I need is, but we need to form that subcommittee to be looking at space to develop whatever plan so that they can bring it to the finance committee, because there's also a timeliness issue here of when these funds are available to us. So, so we need, we, you know, there, there's an urgency to get things moving.
I, I agree with that. I think we've said, what was the date we're setting for the first meeting, and was it the seventh?
September seventh.
Is that, is that soon enough for you?
Yeah, I thought that was just building and grounds, I didn't know that was.
Buildings and grounds owns this issue. And so that's going, that's the first item up for discussion, actually.
One last thing, the.
I do believe, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have Molly speak first, because in order who spoke the least, how we're doing this.
So, we spent a lot of time on this, and I, I listened to everybody, and people were very passionate, one way or the other, on, on even looking at this. But the only way to answer all these questions is to do a little bit of this work. And so my understanding right now, and please, if I misunderstood part of this financial ESER thing, is that if we take that lowest bid of thirty-eight thousand dollars, that thirty-eight thousand is coming out of the ESER funds to pay, and there's no commitment. We take the, we pay them to do a service for us, to help us with our financial plan and our business plan on what it would take.
Several things.
Okay.
So.
But doesn't it, doesn't it all tie into that? You need to have that information to be able to, to be able to do that?
No. We're doing way too much interruption of women in this.
So if, I'm hearing, I'm hearing Jim, and I respect Jim a lot, so I'm trying not to tell him to be quiet, because it's my turn. But, but I respect his knowledge about the finance, and if he really doesn't think that he needs this information to be able to help us with a full business plan on what it's gonna take, then I will back up. But in my world, I can't tell you what that's gonna cost you until I do that work, until I have that plan, until, so I can't give you a full plan on what it would take, what it's gonna cost, what kind of building you're gonna have, so that then, in your business plan, I can tell you, you're gonna have a fifty by a hundred building, and it's gonna cost you so many square feet to heat it, and so many square, you know, all those things. So if I'm totally looking into this defer, that's my world, that's the way I think, but I don't know how we can answer all the questions if we don't do something like that. So it's eight o'clock at night, and we're all arguing with each other, and we're all getting at each other, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here because I want help, and because in my world, I would need that plan to be able to give the owner of my company the business plan on why I wanted a new store. I couldn't give him that complete report and be honest about it and know that I did all my homework if I didn't have that information.
I, I don't disagree with you.
That's, I'm just, that's the way I think.
But I think some people feel that they need to see a business, a feasibility plan that says, yes, we need this.
So I get that.
A business plan that says, yes, this is, this is how it's cost-effective.
And the business, I'm sorry, and the business plan.
Feasibility plan, yeah, could come before this.
And the, there's a little terminology, you, you're correct, everything you said, I think is correct. Business plan is about running a childcare and making money, and how much money are we gonna make? And how many classrooms do we need, how many kids will need to be in them? Do those kids exist in the communities that we serve? And then the other piece, the proposals that Andy outlined are, the term isn't business plan, it's at the end of the conceptual plan. So at the end of those, each of those, there will be, this is how much it's going to cost you, just like you said, to build the building. So when Mr. Breyer said, we need a, we need the business plan, we need to know how much it's gonna cost and our future costs, the business plan from the consultant isn't about how much the building's gonna cost. It's about, it's about how much the business of the childcare will make and caring costs going forward, and how much the building will cost is those architectural design.
Usually, one is a subset of the other, as I have written seventy-five of them, but I will, but I do.
In this instance.
Well, I, I will say that we have, we have, we have separate, two separate ideas. Do they make sense separately? Do they make sense together? I, I think we, we need to, we have not determined that as a board. We need to determine that as a board. I, I suspect we're gonna find it's an easy, easy path, but we need to look at that. So I think this, the question I need from you answered is, do, from you, I need, do we need to act on this tonight? And from you, I need, you need that information from the, from the, from the architects to start to draft out whether or not from a building, some grounds, professionally, well, I'm asking her.
So if I may, I'd like just one more, because I'm, I'm semi-understanding the route that some people are going, and not that anyone's ever wrong. I think from listening to everyone in this room and trying to be open-minded, that the first thing that we need to do is a building and grounds committee for the WNASU is not have an hour-long meeting, because it's not enough. I don't know who's on the committee with me, but an hour is not enough for what I think needs to happen here. Because what I think needs to happen is, we need to meet two or three times, and I'm gonna be the first one to tell you that two o'clock in the afternoon is not a good time for me. But we need to meet during the time when we can go into a school, and we need to go into each school, and with our own eyes, Andy says, and I've heard it, you know, everybody that thinks that they can get me to listen. Andy says, and I've heard it, you know, everybody that thinks that they can get me to listen to them for the past two months has told me their schools are empty, because I don't know when it's down. So, um, I don't know that. So somehow, we've got to get into these schools, talk to our principals, find out how many school, how many rooms are empty in each school? And, and then where do you go with that information? Do you cluster a whole bunch of kids into one school, an empty school, so that you can use it for something else? You know, this is something that when we talk about getting the community to give us permission, or about the time we start putting seventh, eighth grade kids in here without the parents knowing about it, that's gonna create a whole storm. And about the time we take the kindergarten through fourth graders out of the Bellas Falls Elementary School and put them into middle school, because we're looking to empty the schools that we can put, you know,
All that.
All these things are things that can happen.
Right.
But how do we get that information? Andy, how do I get that information?
I think Deb, to walk the schools.
Okay. So can you help me with that schedule?
I can do that, yes.
And then we, let's start there. Is that good?
Yeah, so your availability will be key to tell me if we can do it, because I know you're busy.
This is very helpful. I want to make sure that we get Deb, who's had her hand up, and then Priscilla, who's just had her hand up.
Yeah, I don't even know who's on it, but that's fine.
Does, does the high school and the elementary, the middle school also have building and grounds committees as well? And if indeed that's the case, you've got three sets of people, which maybe some of them may overlap, who could go, who could actually make, make time with, along, you know, getting Andy and the principals in line with this, go in and actually find out how many square feet are actually available in each of those buildings? And then figuring out what can be done with the square feet to rearrange, well, I don't want to say necessarily having to rearrange classes and cause a S-storm at either school, although that's a possibility. So I'm thinking is that's the way to resolve this issue, so we can stop talking about we do need or we don't need a new building for early education.
Yeah, just, just as a point of information, Kathy Ciano and Lynn are your reps from from Ath Craft, I don't know who the, the idea was again, that at least one or two reps from each of the constituent boards are your board. This is again a joint board, trying to get this stuff done collectively, specifically because it's a coordinations issue. I, Priscilla, I'm sorry.
Jack, Rocky Haven did our three buildings last week. And just to note, Central School doesn't even have enough room to keep all their storage items at the school with that short of space there, because we have added, we have put the early childhood children in there this year, so that is
So that, that's something we're doing now.
That's not, that's not safe. I looked at these things.
Guys, again, the interruption thing is gonna make me crazy.
But I mean, this is not
Hold, 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 please. The process we have agreed on, Molly leads the process, gets the reps from each of the buildings and grounds, that's how we're doing it. I think that's a go-forward, and we'll go from there. I'm very mindful that my ninety-minute schedule has been blown to pieces yet again. Are we, do you need a, do you need anything in terms of, well, thank you for raising it, despite the fact it's been a bit passionate, because it needed to be raised, so thank you for that. All right, nine, yeah. D five, D four, Title I comparability, I have no idea what this is. Oh, I do now, yes, this. Thank you. We, are we looking for a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion that we approve the Title I comparability policy. Code D four, and then new coding, and I'll speak to that. Basically, this is just an update of the policy that we have. We added the recommended first sentence to this. That was virtually the only changes we made to the current policy.
All right, I'm looking
It's a required call.
It is a required call.
I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I do, I already
Oh, you made the motion. Oh, gee, you know, you messed up this scorecard. Yes.
I have a question. On that, it had the statement in the Title I funds are used to supplement local and state funding and not to supplant them.
Yeah.
Right, so supplant, not to replace, not to replace. Okay. That was a new word to me.
All right. Is there further discussion on this? I do see some.
Just a question, I think you were about to answer, I noticed you've numbered it D four. Actually, the G thirteen is the number in our current policies.
It's the old one, yes.
Or are you renumbering the whole?
We are renumbering all of them.
You know.
I started this last year.
They have been done for two years. We've been doing, we've been doing this.
Yeah, but right now, they're listed on the website in their old form.
Well, that's a problem.
With a list of the new ones that have been approved. So I, I suggest you don't name all these things yet. Maybe you want to come back and at some point, when you redo the, if you're gonna redo the, I don't know why you're doing this, I have to tell you. But if, when you're going to do it, maybe come back and just have a motion to re-number all the policies in one shot, because right now, you're gonna have two D fours in effect, because the other D four is is, is also a policy, and it's not this one.
You know what?
We, we have started a, a new folder and a new book to do all the new required ones. We've done all the required ones except for about eight of them, and they've all been approved in this, in this form. Noting that G thirteen was the old one, and it's being replaced with this new D four and the new set of policies.
Or D is this, sorry, I remember. Priscilla, I, I, I'm gonna suggest that Chris's suggestion has merit, and that perhaps a few minutes might be spent by the policy committee, just building that new master schedule, and just having all this stuff that needs to be poured over, weighed in as provisional pending approval, and that solves the issue.
Well, it does, but
But
And I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, if this is just a gratuitous doing this because it's somebody's good idea, it's creating a huge amount of work for the tech people, because they're having to move all these policies around and re-number them, and that nice little interface, which we have now, I just, it just came up, I'm so happy. It's got a lot behind it.
Well, part of the issue is, we had this period where we were missing like half the material, and so we, we were, well, I did, that's why you were finally contacted. The, the point is, let's, let's get this worked out. I don't care what the, what the result is, as long as we get, we don't have two D fours. And that's something maybe that
I would call it G fourteen, G thirteen right now. You've got a D four.
Let's let the policy committee do the policy committee stuff, and we'll get them to do it, and we'll be finished with it, hopefully soon. And whether it's G fourteen or D four, I don't care.
I'll, I'll go through it and have it ready for the committee to take out all the old numbering totally. They didn't want to do that. They only wanted to do it as we were doing each one, and that's what we have done for the last, the last year and a half while I've been chair of the committee. And at this point, all of the others aren't numbered to meet this system. This is the system by the state. It makes it easier in the future.
In the interest of time, you'll work it out. He'll be happy to move on. All right, with that noted, we still have a review and approve. Are we going to approve this tonight, or do we want to wait till we do the number?
Because it is, it is in keeping with the required policies that we are required, and latest ones before our committee started doing it are anywhere from five to twenty years old.
So I'm going to make, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, the motion.
I'd like to just, just amend it, say it's a provisionally named D four, just so that we address Mr. Kivvy's concern, and then we can approve that. Is that acceptable to you? All right, do we have, I'm gonna do a roll call. Deb Wright, start with you.
Aye.
Chris Kivvy.
Yep.
Brenda. Lynn.
No.
No. All right, Cheryl.
Aye.
Priscilla.
Aye.
Molly.
Aye.
Jakes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. We've got, we're, we're done on that one. Under director's comments, we'll start with Deb.
Okay, the only thing I have to say about the DEI proposal that's come in, and we, and we did pass it, is simply that it's happening everywhere, and we, you can ignore it as much as you like, but eventually, we're going to come up against the need, as the municipalities are now coming up against the need to have, to have policies in place, to be able to do trainings and that sort of thing, and having money, that grants are available. USDA grants are now requiring that we have these, some of these things in place, and it's part of the grant process. So, like it or not, we can't come up, we can't avoid the future forever. This is the way things are moving in that direction, and we need to look at them plainly, openly, and take some type of affirmative action. That was it. Thank you.
Yeah, Harding.
Well, that's tonight.
Jakes.
Yes, I do have a comment. I commented earlier about the ESR committee possibly being sunset and moving these ideas to the proper boards, like this board or one of the other boards. And Cheryl made a comment about the study for the early education, and that it was approved by a subcommittee of the ESR committee. Okay, that to me is a no-no. Okay? I looked, I went to look at the minutes, because earlier today at the finance committee, you said, or somebody said, that the proposal to do this study of the early education was passed by the WNSU board.
It was.
I couldn't find it in the minutes, because it was obviously
There, that's a problem.
So I'd like to see that. I would like to see the minutes that show that this board approving that study. But clearly, the subcommittee of the ESR committee approved it. And again, it should be here, not there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly.
Oh, I recall that meeting. I think you sat right here. And we talked about it, so it was during one of the meetings. I'm not sure where it is, but I I would hope that we're all, most of us here are business people, and that we keep our eyes wide open and try to have a, at least an open mind to doing things differently. And, you know, looking into what our community really needs, and you know, maybe we're getting a few, you know, emails from somebody who doesn't want to put their name on them, because they, they want to speak, but they're chicken to speak. But we have an opportunity to do something right for the community, if it's what's right for the community. I'm, I'm not telling you what is right and what is wrong, but I'm asking us to all try to be open-minded on what we really should be doing. You know, they, what was it, three or four years ago, the big thing here was that the offices we were in were absolutely disgusting. We needed to get them out, we needed to get out of them. And everybody looked everywhere, and there was nothing that would meet what we needed. So we ended up in a building that is a beautiful building, neat and clean, easy to get in and out of, but it's very expensive. And I just, everybody needs to, well, they don't need to do anything, but I'm gonna ask us all as adults, and most of us business people, to think about what it looks like at the end of the year. And as far as supporting our, our children, I think I've made myself clear. I, you know, I don't have an agenda while I'm on these boards, other than if we aren't here for our kids, what are we here for? So, you know, we just gotta, we, we have to do what's right for our community, and I'm not trying to make our tax dollars more than they are, but if we can get a building built that makes sense, or move kids around or, or offices around that makes sense, I don't, I think we're just, we're all just, we're not, we gotta think about this. We gotta get a plan. So I'm looking very forward to going through the schools. Andy, I'm gonna tell you that I'll commit from two o'clock on on the seventh, if you can get me into some schools. And Jake has raised his hand and would like to be a part of that committee for the SU Building and Grounds Committee. I don't know anybody else that's on that committee?
Yes, just less than on there.
That's perfectly fine, Priscilla. That's, I don't, I don't need to know.
When is
Andy needs to know.
Okay.
Who on this committee is on the building and grounds? And I will commit to two o'clock, from two o'clock for the rest of the day. After it gets dark, I start shutting down.
Priscilla.
Thank you, Molly. That, that just shares the, the feeling I have for all of our board members, that we're here because we care about the children in our community. We also care about keeping our costs down for our taxpayers. That's part of our responsibility as well. So looking at all of these different options is important, and we need to look at them with an open mind. I feel that our board members can do that for our community. And I just really appreciate being able to work with them. As I look across the room at the posters that are up there, and I see kindness, just be kind, care, be caring, loving. Just keep those things in mind, because as we share kindness, it goes a long ways, and it really makes a difference for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl.
Thank you. We're looking at enormous opportunities here now, in many, many ways. Some of those are tied with the approved approximately twenty million dollars in ESR monies. In order to thoughtfully make plans for how to use those monies, Andy has created a committee structure, in contrast with how this was done administration. This is a much larger, more open process of many people weighing in. A committee structure results in recommendations, and approval to recommend is really the concept that's there. And approval to recommend and bring back to the boards is what that structure is doing. I am eager to see us, through this process, get some facts on the table, get some actual business numbers and feasibility analyses done, whether it's number of kids or cost of building, or cost of maintain over time. So I think we're making some steps in that direction, which are appropriate. I am also concerned about our locking ourselves down and not moving ahead thoughtfully and swiftly enough, so I just urge us to be a little cautious about that part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, Brenda.
Sure. I appreciate that comment, and I appreciate your spirit that you brought, what you brought to the table that I voted against. But I'm just concerned a little bit, because I'm a little old-fashioned, and family, church, civic, school, everybody was a part of foreign social behavior. I'm not in favor of government doing behavior, speech, or thinking. But I do believe we can come to the table, and we can share, and we can move forward.
Chris.
I'm also, thanks.
I'm waiting to ask, because I just want to tell you guys that despite what you may think, you actually did a lot of good work here tonight. These are hard. We're talking about, we're talking about the most important educational initiatives this has since this building was built, and really since the sixties. Of course, it's gonna be passionate. Of course, it's gonna be hard. Of course, it's gonna be a lot of emotion on the table, as there should be. And the fact is that we have, it seems to me that we haven't been as clear about what our processes ought to be are, as maybe we should have been. I'm gonna take some responsibility for that, despite thinking I had done it. I want to make sure that everyone in our communities, in our constituent districts, all feel that the process is open, whether we agree with the final decisions or not, that it's open, that it's been fairly considered that everyone can speak without interruption. that it's open, that it's been thoroughly considered, that everyone can speak without interruption, that everyone got to speak, and that we have vetted the issues by the people that are in charge. You all know that I get on a soapbox about learned helplessness, the idea that we can't solve anything, we can just complain and throw poo in the general direction of the decision-makers. You are in charge. This board is in charge of the, of this SU. The voters are, your, your individual boards are in charge of you, and the voters are in charge of the whole thing. If you are in charge, we need to remember that, act like that, and, and, and take the opportunity that's put in front of us. All I'm here for is not to tell you what to think, but to put an organizational structure in place so that we can do our business. And even though it took us another half hour more than I thought, we did it. So thank you all, and I will entertain a motion to return.
So move.
It sounds like we got a consensus. Good night.